We're going to open up with public hearings. The first one we're going to open, I'm going to open the small-scale Florida amendment ordinance, Ms. Brandy?
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read a public statement?
Yes, please, I'm sorry.
I'm in an unusual spot, so I apologize. Washington County Board of County Commissioners welcomes your input at the public comment portion of this meeting. While your comments are appreciated, please be aware this is not a political forum nor is it a time for personal accusations and derogatory personal remarks. Profane or vulgar language is not permitted. In the order to maintain respect for all points of view, the board requests that clapping, booing, or any other form of support or non-support be used. This is not a question-and-answer session. It is a general policy of Washington County Board of County Commissioners that no official action has to be taken on items that are not agendas and brought to the board. If you want the board to look into the matter, you can ask the chairman and he will look into the matter with the county administrator. If you would like to address the board at the public hearing portion of this, we would ask that you stand up, state your name and address, and you'll be discussing. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. At the end of the time, the chairman will ask you to finish your thought, and please take your seat. Mr. Chairman, I believe today since we've got several public hearings, which is somewhat unusual, I'll let you call them one at a time and go down the list of folks who've signed up to speak on this.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Ms. Brandy?
This is the Small-Scale Amendment Ordinance, an ordinance by the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, Florida, amending through the small-scale amendment process the adopted Conferences of Plan for Washington County, Florida, dated April 4 of 1991, as amended, which controls future land use, guides public facilities, and protects natural resources pursuant to the Local Government Conference of Planning and Land Development Regulations Act, Chapter 163 of Florida statutes, providing and copying on file, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. This is the small-scale amendment amending a piece of property from agricultural, supercultural to general commercial.
Any questions? All right, no one's signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on that? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll close the small-scale Florida amendment ordinance and move on to the floodplain ordinance.
An ordinance by the Board of County Commissioners of Washington County, Florida, amending Washington County's Florida Code of Ordinances to repeal Washington County's Land Development Code, Article 5, Development Design and Improvement Standards, Appendix A, an ordinance number 2011-3, as amended, the Washington County's Floodplain Management Ordinance, to amend the Washington County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Buildings and Building Regulations, to adopt a new floodplain management ordinance, to adopt flood hazard maps, to designate a floodplain administrator, to adopt procedures and criteria for development in a flood hazard area, and for other purposes, providing applicability, repealer, survivability, and the effective date.
Brandy, this is a mandate from the federal government dictating what is and what is not in a floodplain. And at their will, according to their equipment and mapping, they can dictate whether you're in a floodplain or not. On top of that, they went in here and dictated to us that we have to have a manager in reference to this. Is this a funded mandate or an unfunded mandate?
I'm not sure. I mean, I just picked up where I inherited this, essentially. So, I'm not sure if this is something that is funded or not. This is one of the requirements for qualifying for CRS as well, and with our new Florida Building Code coming out, this has to update along with the Florida Building Code updating.
Basically, we're just coming in line with policy to...
Yes, sir. The surrounding counties are doing the same thing.
But you're not aware of whether they're going to give us any funding for this additional manager floodplain manager?
Not that the administrator, not that I know of.
Sign funding, Mr. Chairman.
That's all the questions I have.
Okay. Once again, no one has signed up. Would anybody like to speak on this matter?
Yeah.
Seeing none, hearing none.
The only other thing I'd like to say on that is in the ordinance, Scott, it designates our county engineer as the floodplain administrator.
Yeah, he is a great engineer.
So, there is cause because we got to pay him.
Sure. All right. I'm going to close the floodplain ordinance, and we will move on and we'll open up our franchise fee ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of set the stage on what we're doing here today, we've got two ordinances that are 98 percent virtually identical, trying to accomplish the same thing. First one is related to Gulf Power. It's an ordinance granting to Gulf Power Company, Corporation, and its successors and assigns the right to franchise, to maintain and operate an electric plant and an electric transmission and distribution system in the unincorporated areas of Washington County, Florida, to construct, maintain, and operate and extend electric transmission and distribution lines in the streets and public places of said county, providing the terms and conditions of such grant, providing for grant of franchise and privilege, providing for right to operate, providing for term of franchise, providing for franchise consideration, providing for training for ability, providing for forfeiture of franchise, providing for termination of grant by insolvency or bankruptcy, providing for severability, providing holding harmless agreement, providing for rates, rules, and regulations, providing for review and revisions of franchise provisions, providing for other franchises, providing for successors and assigns, providing for proper operation, providing for interruption of service, providing for metering and service, providing for excavation, maintenance, and restoration, providing for surrender of rights, providing for written acceptance by grantee, providing for appeal of all ordinances in conflict here with, and providing an effective date. It's been discussed prior with the board. This is Gulf Power and implementation of a 5 percent franchise fee for the right and use of a non-exclusive franchise agreement to operate in Washington County, to use our right of ways, to maintain their lines on our right of ways, et cetera. So, that is the purpose of the franchise. We'll be doing this one, and then the next one we'll be reading is the same one with respect to Westport Electric Cooperative. I'll be glad to answer any questions that we may have.
I don't have anything left.
All right. Once again, no one's signed up to speak on this matter. Anyone in the audience like to speak? Seeing none, hearing none, I'll close that portion. We'll open up the FW ECA franchise fee ordinance.
I apologize to the audience and the board for the retardness. This is just something that's required that we read the entire pilot, even though it's all the same except for the name. An ordinance granting to Westport Electric Cooperative Association and successors and assigns, providing franchise to maintain and operate an electric plant and an electric transmission and distribution system in unincorporated areas of Washington County, Florida, and to construct, maintain, operate, and extend electric transmission and distribution lines in the streets and public places of said county, and providing the terms and conditions of such grant, providing for grant of franchise privilege, providing for right to operate, providing for term of franchise, providing for franchise consideration, providing for transferability, providing for forfeiture of franchise, providing for termination of grant by insolvency or bankruptcy, providing for severability, providing hold harmless agreement, providing for rates, rules, and regulations, providing for review and revisions of franchise provisions, providing for other franchises, providing for successors and assigns, providing for proper operation, providing for interruption of service, providing for metering and service, providing for excavation, maintenance, and restoration, providing for surrender of rights, providing for written acceptance by grantee, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict here with, and providing an effective date. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Once again, we have no one signed up to speak. Would anyone in the audience like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, hearing none, I will close the FW ECA franchise fee ordinance and open up the alcohol ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I got here today, I thought everybody was here for my last day, but I'm sitting here.
Surprise.
That's a good way to go out, right? This is an ordinance pertaining to the regulation, sell, consuming, serving of beer, wine, or other alcoholic or intoxicating beverages in Washington County, Florida, regulating the hours that alcoholic beverages may be sold, consumed, served, or permitted to be served or consumed, regulating the minimum distance from a church that alcoholic beverages may be sold for consumption on the premises, repeating all ordinances in conflict here with, including ordinance dated April 9, 1973, 83-1, ordinance 93-4, and ordinance 96-1, providing for severance of invalid provisions, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date. I'm going to do a little something different with this, Mr. Chairman, because of the folks in the room. I'm going to go ahead and read my whereas, because I think my whereas has kind of explained what the board is trying to accomplish with respect to this ordinance, what it's not trying to accomplish and what it is trying to accomplish. Whereas Florida statute 1250110 empowers a county governing body to establish and enforce regulations for the sale of alcoholic beverages in the unincorporated areas of the county pursuant to general law. Whereas Florida statute 562452A allows a county of the state to enact ordinances regulating the hours of business of persons and indices holding a state beverage license within the unincorporated areas of the county. And whereas Florida statute 5621, four states in relevant part, except as otherwise provided by county or municipal ordinance, no alcoholic beverages may be sold, consumed, served, or permitted to be served or consumed in any place holding a license between the hours of midnight and 7:00 a.m. with the following day. Whereas Florida statute 562452A provides certain restrictions with respect to allowing a location for on-premise consumption of alcoholic beverages within 500 feet of rural property comprised of a public or private school. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners for Washington County recognizes that the ongoing recession and the condition of the economy challenges local businesses to seek new and better ways to serve the needs of their patrons. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners for Washington County understands that the continued success of businesses focused on food services and sales is an important component of the success and the county's goal to continue to provide venues for socializing and entertainment. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners for Washington County is attempting to balance the goals of growth and job creation with historical deference provided to churches, private residences, and other individuals and community-based needs by implementing the following rules and regulations. And whereas under state laws regulating the sale of beer, wine, and other alcoholic or intoxicating beverages, the Board of County Commissioners for Washington County is authorized to establish a location and hours of operation for alcohol sales in the unincorporated areas of the county. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners for Washington County wishes to provide lesser fear of locational and/or time criteria for businesses operating primarily as food sales slash service establishments as fully set forth herein. And so, that's the whereas that lead into the ordinance, Mr. Chairman. Yes, for the public's sake, you may not have attended some of the workshops that we've bantered this issue back and forth. What the board is attempting to do here is trying to allow certain qualifying establishments, specifically what we have defined as restaurants in the ordinance, to locate closer to both churches and private residences. Right now in Washington County, and I would say historically all the way back to 1970, I think the original ordinance was enacted in 1972 or 1973, there's been a 2,000-foot buffer between onsite consumption of state establishments and churches, and it started with 1,000, 1,000 feet for residences, and it's kind of dwindled down, and now it's between 500 and 1,000, depending on the situation. But what the board is trying to do, or what it's attempted to do in drafting the ordinance is to allow what we have defined as restaurants, and there's several qualifications to become a restaurant in the ordinance or be defined as a restaurant, some of it is a statutory definition, to allow those qualifying establishments to have the opportunity to get set up and become businesses closer than that 2,000-foot buffer that currently exists. And I know there's a lot of concern in the community about how would this ordinance play out, but that was the intent, or what is the intent of the ordinance that is before you. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you all have, certainly the public will have the ability to comment on it as well.
Yeah, we appreciate your hard work on this. All right. At this time, I'll open the public comment, and we do have three people signed up. I'll start with Mr. Richard Williams.
Thank you, Chair. First off, it's been a great pleasure to work with you. I guess I would say you're honored to be here, just remembered that if I ever have to come to Florida again, I'm a good guy, okay? That being said, I am Richard Williams. I'm the executive director of Opportunity Flora, nine-county economic development organization. It's a regional organization, so we tend to think regional about everything we do. We just commissioned the study, and we're in the process, and I hope to be able to bring the final version of it to you, but I'm going to give you a few things out of it, if you don't mind. It was done by Vision First, which is headed by Gray Swobbs, the former secretary of commerce for the state of Florida, also for the state of Mississippi. In this study, we compared ourselves, this region, to a region in Alabama, a region in South Carolina. Give you some things that we're finding in it, and I hate to be doing the gloom again, but from our region, we're at a per capita income of 18,000, and the others, they're at 32 and 34. When you look at the poverty levels, we're at 26 or 21.5. The state's only at about 16. You can look at the number after number, and we show up being lower. So, we've got a lot of work to do in this region. And we're, the reason why I'm here today, and not only this ordinance, but other things that you're looking at doing, one of the things that the study came out and said is we've got to have more product availability, not just in traditional economic development, also in retail. That's going to be key for this region if we want to be able to go forward. One of the things we've got to have is we've got to have more tractors for young professionals so that we can try to draw them into this area. We are significantly aging as a population, and we've got to give those younger folks a reason to stay here. Dating laws and land use policies, and notice it's not just land use, and that's the thing a lot of people like to talk about. We need to go through and look at all of our laws, all of our rules, all of our regulations down to the county level, and look for things that are keeping people maybe from putting businesses in or expanding the business that they've got. Because if you'll do that, if you'll grow those businesses there, you're going to stand a better chance of keeping your population. And also, I did want to mention the workforce housing area. You know, we've got a population of about 20,000 more than those other areas, and yet we've got 8,000 fewer rental houses. And that's another area that I think you need to try to address. But again, it comes down to rules and regulations, and for this particular rule that you're talking about, you know, it does help on the retail side of the fence. That's an area that we do need to increase. We need to get our money staying here. We need to have our individuals staying here, and if you can do so and still maintain the nature and the culture of your county, that's a great thing to do, and we applaud you for that. That's all, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
One thing, if I may, Mr. Fisher, I think it's just a typo, but I just called it. Was on the time, the times, it says...
What did I say?
I don't think it should be 4:00 AM. What was discussed?
Knock pit off time, start now. Start.
Can I ask, Mr. Chairman, can I ask Mr. Bush a question? Just to make sure I'm clear on how he wants to edit the read. And for the public's sake, right now, there's 12:00 AM to 7:00 PM, I apologize. It's kind of the dead period, we will say, under the ordinance. Mr. Bush, are you wanting the sale to be allowed at 4:00 AM, but no onsite consumption sale at 4:00 AM?
Correct. That's what was discussed.
Okay. Will amend the ordinance so that there is no onsite consumption sale at 4:00 AM, but a gas station or a store that sells for offsite consumption will be able to sell at 4:00 AM, if that's what the board would like to do? That we'll note that in the minutes. Ms. Resha, if it is approved, when it's time to be approved, if the board would like to...
Well, we went back and forth, and I don't know that the conversation that come up here and it come up, and I don't know that we really ever defined anything. The issue that was brought to us was the suggestion that some people getting up going fishing early in the morning would not be able to purchase...
My biggest concern is the onsite sales. I wouldn't stop at 12:00.
Yes, for consumption.
That's my sticking point. If it's on...
And that fits our criteria of what we're going after, the restaurant market. You don't have restaurants, ain't nothing for that.
The language that's currently in there and the ordinance you have in front of you is the current language that the county has, and it's basically taking the verbatim, how these four statutes. You, as the county, have the flexibility to amend that to make it less restrictive, we will say, like Mr. Bush is wanting to. The rest of the ordinance in its entirety pertains to onsite consumption. This is the only provision in the ordinance that would deal not only with onsite consumption, but with offsite as well. So, we will distinguish onsite from offsite, whereas your onsite would be midnight to 7:00 AM, your offsite sale would be allowed from midnight to 4:00 AM for folks to go fishing or whatever they do on the weekend.
All right. Next up, Mr. Richard Burke.
I'm Richard Burke, president of the Hellfighters Motorcycle Ministry, and I thank y'all for the opportunity to say something. But I heard about this ordinance, and it saddened me for several reasons. One, I just came back from Sturgis, South Dakota, a town the same size as Chitwick. They had 600,000 people in there for two weeks. Reason, drinking and partying. Their economy is based on alcohol and freedom to do as, whatever. I read this, and I'll tell you, some of the stuff that says beer, wine, and other alcohol are intoxicating beverages. Number one, if we're going to okay intoxicating beverages, that means whiskey. That's other intoxic... So, you, I mean, you've got those words in there, other intoxicating, and at the very end of it, you've got violations if somebody violates. So, you already know you're going to have problems, because you've already got a fine for these people who's going to stretch this. The sale stops at 12:00 midnight. The way they do it in Sturgis, I can tell you right now, they have tubs they sell at 11:59. Somebody can come in there and buy a tub of beer, mixed drinks, they can buy a whole tub of it with about 200 cans of beer, and they've already, the sale's finished at midnight. But they can stay in there and drink all night long because they've already bought the beer, you know? And I can see this thing being stretched. I don't, I hate that our county, when we're needing more money, the one thing we're looking for is something like alcohol. You know, we're not thinking about bowling alleys, you know, you said entertainment and things like this. We're not looking at anything, but let's look at something that we know, if you look at the stats, how many people die from alcohol a year? Wrecks and violations. They do things that they normally wouldn't do because they're drunk. As far as somebody going fishing on a Saturday morning, that's great if they'll drink that beer on the boat, but you still got a drunk boater, you know? I hate to say it, but I think the county needs to be looking at not trying to lessen these things. I don't want a bar or some, a drinking establishment next to my house. So, if you're going to eliminate where the house is renting next to me, if somebody wants to come there and open up and start, I don't want any of that. You know, I stand here, and I'm looking. In God, we trust, okay? We trust him for what? We trust him for the finances of Washington County? We trust him to put that sign up there and leave it? Looks good? Folks, let's get real with this thing. If our county is dependent on alcohol sales, I'm sorry, I'm sorry for Washington County. I've come back from Sturgis, I've dealt with so many drunks out there trying to help them. Young kids that normally don't drink, all we're doing is giving them more opportunity to drink. But I just, I think if you do pass this, and any, you need to remove that, other intoxicating beverages, because all they have to do is say, no, you got it right there in your law. That superseded everything else. We can sell whiskey now, because that's other intoxicating beverages.
Mr. Burke, you've spent your three minutes a little bit over. I'm going to let Mr. Goodman address that.
All very valid comments, and I appreciate your comments. And those are, as a member of the community, those are all important and well-thought-out comments. Some things I probably didn't do that could have, he could have used his three minutes elsewhere, so I apologize to him for probably wasting his, part of his three minutes, is, and for people in the room that don't know, right now in Washington County, by ordinance way, way, way back when, we have allowed the sale of what I will call beer. This ordinance, the other intoxicating beverages, is a term of art that's been used since the 70s in Washington County and is used here for consistency purposes. The beverages I think that he is concerned about, I will just say the whiskey for what he said, those are not allowed under this ordinance. And what would have to happen for whiskey to be sold, or what I would just call hard liquor, or what people in the room would probably call it, is there would have to be a special referendum. So, the people of this county are going to have to decide that in a special referendum. And so, a very valid concern with respect to the reading of ordinance, this is the language that has been used in our ordinances since the adoption, probably 40 years ago, so that's why I used it for consistency purposes. But by statute and by our ordinances, our history of training of ordinances, and I think the percentage of alcohol is 6 percent, it's something like that, but anything over that is what we would call hard liquor, what I would call hard liquor. That does not cover this, and that's not allowed under this ordinance, and would have to be acted on by referendum. With respect to offsite consumption, the fishing issue is a very valid point as well. I would note that we do have an ordinance that restricts when you buy packaged alcohol, if you went to a gas station and bought a beer, there is a restrictive ordinance that says you cannot consume that alcohol within a certain amount of feet. We already have that in place, the board did that probably a decade or two ago. So, there are some things that prevent, at least near that establishment, going ahead and consuming that. But I think that's a very good point that you brought up, and a justification or a clarification I need to make is with respect to what we would call hard liquor, that is not allowed under this ordinance, and it would have to be voted on by referendum. Another thing I want to point out, just to make sure everybody understands, and I've been to Sturgis myself, not during the biker time of year, but it is a beautiful area of the country. It's a little bit different than what we're trying to attract here. And so, what we've done in the ordinance is we have tried to create where 50-plus percent of your sales have to be for food, you have to have a full working kitchen at all hours of operation. There's probably five or six other things in the ordinance that make it to where we're trying to target more of a TGI Fridays or a Ruby Tuesdays than some of the things you see in Sturgis. And so, certainly, I don't want my children raised in Sturgis as much as I enjoy visiting. But all the points that he made are very, very valid, very good points, and very thought out, and as a citizen, I appreciate his comments. I just wanted to make this clarification to you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Next up, Jim Towne.
Jim Towne, 4116 Adler Court, Sunny Hills. I'd like to approach this from an economic development and tax-based point of view. As you gentlemen know, the county is at 9.2520 on the millage, probably going to be very similar this year. The state has a cap of 10 mils. To put it into dollars, you're less than 600,000 away from being at the 10-mil cap. And if the price of gasoline went up significantly, or fuel, we burn a lot of fuel, diesel fuel, if that goes up significantly, a bad year with workers' comp insurance, this county could be back at 10 mils real quick. So, it's incumbent that we do land planning to encourage people to come here, that we get businesses that are going to add to our ad valorem tax law. Now, some of you know my background in corporate real estate, and I used to build in 26 states and some foreign countries, but there was two things that were on every single site checklist. One was the quality of the education system, the ranking of the schools within the state, and the other was white tablecloth restaurants. Didn't matter what kind of site we were looking for, those two things were on all the checklists. The school system, because an educated workforce, you have lower turnover problems, you have an easier time getting people qualified for jobs, and the community that has a strong education system generally has a middle income, so you have a middle class. The white tablecloth issue has to do with amenity. Quite often, corporations will transfer people into an area when they make a new development, and you have to be assured that there's going to be a middle-income type of atmosphere, because if you're transferring people from a big city into a rural area, they're used to being able to eat out. So, white tablecloths were always a big thing. Now, as a corporation, we didn't encourage alcoholic beverages. We simply viewed that as a way to measure the economic level in the area, because if there are white tablecloths, it means that the households have discretionary income, and people in fact do eat out. So, white tablecloths were always important to... So, white tablecloths were always important to us. We've spent the last three years quadrupling the amount of commercial property south of I-10 on 77, and doubling the commercial property at 79 and I-10. Sewer water's going in. The distances at 2,000 feet really block development down there. There's 260 acres in round numbers on 77, and with the radiuses, there's probably less than 30 acres out of that that could accommodate a TJ Applebee's or a restaurant of that type. So, we've been through all this for the last three years to create land. We've got sewer and water going in, and we need to invite people. And the people we invite are going to have on their checklist white tablecloth restaurants. So, we need a couple to help our tax base. The businesses that are projected at I-10, there's eight of them, you've seen the details, that is a sustained $1.2 million a year added to the ad valorem tax base. Now, it doesn't start with year one, because they come one at a time, but for the amount of alcoholic beverage you're talking about, consumption in a restaurant that has 51% or more food sales is pretty minute. What it will do to our tax base, though, is huge.
One thing that Mr. Town said, I just, I want to clarify as well for the audiences There are still land use and zoning procedures in effect. And so, in Washington County, you can't locate a Ruby Tuesdays on an ad piece of property. You would have to go through a process with a public hearing, just like this one, where people would get noticed and have the opportunity to object if that wasn't in conformity with the standards of our community. And so, this is no way affects the planning and zoning aspect and the land use change aspect. It would have to occur if a business wanted to come to a site that was not commercially designated. And so, that's an important clarification as well. That does not impact that requirement at all.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, hearing none, I'll close the alcohol ordinance section.